I'd like to call to order the work session for May the 13th. Counsel, no doubt you will agree with me that the baseball world lost a hero. Clearwater lost a friend. Really, the world lost a gentleman. But the heavens gained an angel. And I would appreciate your rising for a moment of silence in memory of David Montgomery, the chairman of the Philadelphia Phillies. May the Lord our God grant him everlasting life in his kingdom and a long life to each of us. Thank you. Let me also remind you, if you have a cellphone or other device, to please silence it so it doesn't go off during our meeting. First order of business is to recognize and swear in our new police officers Tammy Barletto, Benjamin Bieber, Alexander Kay, Jonathan Reed, and Darrell Whitley. This call and Chief Slaughter.
Mr. Mayor, Dan Slaughter, Chief of Police. I'd like to introduce you to the five new recruits with the Clearwater Police Department. Starting with my left, I have Tammy Barletto. She's a retired police officer from the Syracuse Police Department in New York following her retirement. She worked with Delaware State Police as a network technician. She's earned her master's degree in criminal justice from Boston University and her bachelor's degree from Florida Atlantic University. Next to her is Benjamin Bieber. He is a decorated United States Army serviceman who served as an aviation operations specialist before receiving an honorable discharge. In 2018, he joined the Reserve Program as a sergeant for a two-year commitment. He has worked as an asset protection associate and as a Pinellas County deputy. He is currently studying at University of South Florida to obtain his Master's of Science in Strategic Intelligence and also has earned his bachelor's degree in political science from Auburn University. Alexander Kay is a decorated active member of the United States Army Reserve Military Police. He has served in the military since 2012 and graduated recently from the St. Petersburg College Law Enforcement Academy. He's attended Penn State University and Northampton Community College and is the grandson of one of our longtime volunteers, Sid Kay. Jonathan Reed is a decorated United States Marine Corps Corporal. He served in the military as a leader in the amphibious assault vehicle section before receiving his honorable discharge and reenlisting in the United States Marine Corps Reserve Program. He's earned his high school diploma from Gulf High School. Darrell Whitley worked as a police officer with the St. Petersburg Police Department. He previously worked as a freight handler at Southeastern Freight Lines and is a counselor at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. He's earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Florida Technical College in 2016 and his associate's degree from Valencia College in 2014. With your permission, Mayor, it asks that you direct a clerk to swear them in.
We'll do that. And if any family member wants to come and take a photo, if you want to come off to the sides, feel free to do so at this time. Your grandfather's so proud. Watch your step there. Well, welcome to the finest police department, if not in the state of Florida, at least in Pinellas County. Thank you for signing up. I'd like to call forward now Brian Langlil for 20 years of service in the city of Syracuse. Wait until you get to 25.
Brian Langlil started his career with the city of Clearwater on May 10, 1999, working at the Clearwater Gas System. Hired as the gas supply and technology engineer, Brian was the chief gas supply officer for Clearwater Gas and oversaw all natural and propane gas supply purchases. Brian also supported the sales staff with key customer service account, gas supply contracts, and emerging technology products. He also performed cost payback analysis for commercial customers wanting to convert from electric to gas equipment. In 2009, Brian was promoted to gas operations manager where he oversaw the installation and maintenance of gas mains and service lines, cathodic protection, engineering design, compressed natural gas fueling station operations, and public service commission annual inspections. Brian was promoted to gas system assistant director in 2016 where he currently oversees all operating and administrative sections of the Florida Gas System. Brian is also the project manager for the design and construction of a new gas complex at 400 North Myrtle Avenue. The project consists of a new administration and operations building along with six other supporting buildings in the complex. Brian received a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from the University of South Florida in 1997. In 2004, Brian obtained his professional engineering license and certified energy manager licenses in 2005. In 2013, he was appointed by Governor Rick Scott to be a commissioner and sit on the Florida Building Commission to address Florida's specific building code and compliance issues related to the natural gas industry. He also served as chairman of the Florida Gas Utility Board of Directors from 2014 to 2018 and currently serves as vice president for the Florida Municipal Gas Association. He is also active in the Florida Engineering Society Pinellas Chapter and was president of the chapter in 2018. It is an honor to recognize Brian Langlil for his 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Clearwater, our citizens, and customers of the Florida Gas System. Brian Langlil, please.
Well done, Brian. Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks for everything. Our second honorary for 20 years is Melissa Jackson from our Parks and Recreation Department.
Melissa Misty Jackson began her career in the city in 1999 in a part-time position as a library page with the library department and was promoted to full-time library assistant within just a few months. Following several years at the library, Misty moved to the finance department as an accounting clerk and was then promoted to an accounting technician in the Parks and Recreation Department in 2014. In addition to her responsibilities of the department's accounts receivable, Misty has become very skilled with the direct track software program. She serves as a great resource for staff using the program at all of the recreation centers all over the city. Misty is very dependable and as part of a team that has seen many staffing changes over the years, she has repeatedly stepped up to help making sure the team's work is complete. Congratulations on this milestone with the city. It is truly an honor to recognize Misty for her 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Clearwater.
Congratulations, Melissa. Watch your step. Congratulations, Melissa. Thanks. We're also recognizing one 25-year employee this morning, Rob Beravides from our police department.
Detective Rob Beravides began his employment with the city of Clearwater as a police officer in May 31, 1994. He quickly found his calling when he was assigned as a detective in the Crimes Against Children and Families Unit in 2000 and served as the case agent and subject matter expert on investigations involving online sexual predators when this was an emerging trend. He is now a 19-year veteran of the police department's Criminal Investigations Division, currently overseeing the day-to-day operations of the Intelligence Units, Orbiture and Seizure Section. In addition to his regular duties, Detective Beravides has served the department as both as firearms instructor and armor. He has led countless AR-15 rifle schools for patrol and instructed for multiple post-academic classes. He also was a member of the SWAT team from 1996 to 2001 and was an assistant team leader as a sniper. Detective Beravides recently chaired a police equipment test committee that evaluated a variety of handgun platforms. The testing of these handgun platforms went beyond focusing on the equipment alone but included a cross-section of employees of different skill levels to ultimately determine the platform the employees perform best using along with the overall reliability and the environmental conditions seen in Clearwater. Detective Beravides is a valued member of the CID team and is a tremendous asset to the Clearwater Police Department. Thank you for all your years of service to the city of Clearwater.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you. I knew it was going to start. Congratulations. Our Employee of the Month for April 2019 is Antoine Ham from our Parks and Recreation Department.
We've got your leader squads here today. Recently, there was an event planned during the evening hours at Walter Campbell Field that Antoine was not scheduled to work. As the event grew near, some of the pre-scheduled items that were supposed to be arriving for the event never came. Antoine's staff person called him at home and alerted him of the issue of the item being hours late. Antoine tried to contact their dispatch without success, so he drove into the office to retrieve his work truck. He then drove down to the location of the item that was desperately needed and hitched it up and delivered the item to the field. Once the item was delivered, he took the time to help set it up and make sure it was safe for the event staff to use. He also then stayed even longer and made sure things went smooth and that the event went off without another hitch. Another example of him doing this was during the recent employee recognition luncheon. Someone showed up to pick up an item from events and realized that it was too large to fit in the car. Antoine, without missing a beat, offered to load it up and deliver it the next day with a smile on his face. Antoine Ham is an exceptional employee, not only just doing his job, but going the extra mile and making sure that the city is represented well. Thank you for always making us look good. Antoine Ham, April 2019 Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Watch your step. Watch your step. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Please begin. Thank you to those employees who were recognized today, those who've served and those continue to serve, whether it's for 25 years or 25 days, we appreciate it. Thank you all very much. I'd like to recess the work session and call to order the pension trustees for May the 13th. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes of April the 15th?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of April the 15th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of the pension trustees? If so, please come forward at this time. Otherwise, we will move on to Agenda Item 4.1. Agenda Item... Oh, what are you doing over there? Agenda Item 4.1.
Good morning. Requested to approve the new hires for assessments in the pension plan as listed.
Any questions for staff on 4.1? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.1?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.1.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. All in favor, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Agenda Item... Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 4.2.
Approve the following request of employees to vest their pensions as provided by Section 2.419 of the Employees Pension Plan.
Questions for staff on 4.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.2.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 4.3.
Motion to approve the following request of employees for regular pension as provided by Sections 2.419 and 2.424 of the Employees Pension Plan.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.3? Anybody from the public wishing to speak to Agenda Item 4.3?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.3.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Forrier, do you have any other business for the council?
No.
Okay. We will adjourn the pension trustees for May the 13th and move on to the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of May the 13th. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes of April the 15th?
Move approved minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of April the 15th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of the CRA? If so, please come forward at this time. Make sure you've had a card that's been filled out and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Johnson. I did fill out a card. Just wanted to say thank you for the great Florida Orchestra concert at Cochran Park Friday evening. The weather was perfect. Dr. Kundoff, your representative there, said that you were responsible for that, so thank you. And also, thank you, of course, for sponsorship of the program. It was interesting to note that the orchestra used the same tent, stage, and equipment setup as they used in Tampa's Julian B. Lane Park for a similar Pops in the Park concert program last night, except, of course, they didn't have the beautiful sunset that we had here in Clearwater. The Clearwater Orchestra Experience was clearly why HRNA recommended building the brand as one of the first three interim steps for Imagine Clearwater. On a different subject, I attended the Clearwater Downtown Merchants Association's meeting on Tuesday and heard the discussion of downtown parking. What I would share with you today is that I don't understand the closing of the Garden Avenue parking ramp to hourly parking during weekday hours. I know it's open after regular business hours. It made sense to add and include monthly parking, permit parking there, when there were unused hourly parking capacity. But to totally close it takes away a local retail parking option during the day. I believe it may also take away the merchant parking program. I understand that Station Square has hourly parking, but the location in the signage isn't as accessible to the general public as the Garden Street or Garden Avenue Garage. There are several other parking suggestions and questions that I'll be sharing with you and the staff next week. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. Karina Morrison, 409 North Highland Avenue, Clearwater, Florida. I'm with Shop Local for Good. We started the hashtag in January. It's hashtag rocking 600 block to build a 600 block of Cleveland Street. I just want to invite all of you out for Blast Friday. It's going to be on May 31st and invite you to come out and visit the 600 block and invite any vendors or food trucks that are interested in connecting with Shop Local for Good. We've partnered with Ruth Eckert Hall on trying to stage a bigger impact on the 600 block of Cleveland. So everybody have a wonderful morning and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item that's not on the agenda of the CRA? If not, I will close public comment and move on to Agenda Item 4.1. Mr. Maxwell.
Approve the purchase and surplus of surplus real property owned by the city of Clearwater located at 115 South Martin Luther King Avenue with the purchase price of $300,549.11 and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. This is a companion item with the one that the council approved, the city council approved last month where you surplused the property and now this is the purchase of the property by the CRA from the city.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.1? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.1?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.1.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 4.2.
Approve the purchase of surplus property, real property located at the southwest corner of Cleveland Street and Dr. Martin Luther King Avenue legally described as the north 282.5 feet of the east 50 feet of Block 5 according to the plat of Sarah McMullin's subdivision as recorded in Plat Book 1, Page 41, Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida, together with all that part of the west 90 feet of the east 110 feet of the northwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of Section 15 Township 29 South, Range 15 East, which lies between eastwardly projections of the north and south boundaries of the part of said Block 5 thus defined less and accept any road rights of way with the purchase price of $346,782.89 and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Similarly to the previous item, this is a surplus item from the city and the CRA is purchasing this item.
Questions on 4.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.2.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 4.3.
Approve the purchase of surplus real property located at the southwest corner of Prospect Avenue and Park Street legally described as Track 3 of the Platte Mediterranean Village in the park as recorded in Plat Book 125, Pages 44 through 46 of the Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida with the purchase price of $260,000. Authorize appropriate officials to execute same. Much like two previous items, this is the purchase of surplus property from the city by the city.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.3?
I have one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know we get a briefing on the budget for the CRA, the different... But it would be kind of helpful, we do that at a different timeframe, but I don't know if my colleagues would agree with me. It'd be helpful to see the impact of these purchases on the CRA budget since it is a limited thing, like 2.5 million. I know what comes in to see where we are after these purchases because we still have an incentive program, there's a lot of other options. So just to kind of keep us up to speed as opposed to us scheduling a one-on-one with the CRA director. I mean, it seems like it could be something easily added.
We could provide something on that. That's not a problem.
I don't know if anybody agrees with me. I know it's a change. How things are typically presented, but...
I was going to say, we've just approved almost a million dollars' worth of purchase without really knowing. And I was going to ask, you know, explain to the public, where does that money come from and why are we doing this as the CRA, not as the city council?
Right. So the reason we're doing it as the CRA instead of the city council is because this is actually purchasing property from the city council, the city itself, moving it to the CRA, transferring it there. So the city either swapped or purchased for the property. The CRA is now buying that property back from the separate fund, which is the city fund, bringing it into the CRA fund and then combining it with other properties to use it for redevelopment purposes.
And the CRA gets its money not from general revenue, property taxes for the whole city, right?
Right. It's from the tax increment. So at two points in time, we took a snapshot of the two areas of the CRA, two separate areas. The amounts that have increased over the years, both the county and the city funding has come to the CRA and been used for funding various redevelopment projects throughout the city, or throughout the CRA, not the city, within that area.
And so, just for the public's information, why is it more important for the CRA to maintain control of these properties for redevelopment as opposed to the city of Clearwater?
There's some additional alternatives as far as redevelopment is concerned. It's easier for us to package it into a deal, work with different developers to try to work something out to incentivize them to come into the downtown. There's more tools in the CRA than there are with the city.
We all know that, but everybody else doesn't. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Anybody from the public wishing to speak to Agenda Item 4.3?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.3.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Agenda Item 4.4.
Amend the time-limited CRA food and drink grant program for property owners to extend the program to September 30, 2019 for those who pre-qualified for the program and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. At the last meeting, we talked about two groups that brought forward incentive applications. We approved one of those. The contract for that is still pending. However, at that time, we discussed extending the program to September 30 when Ms. Thompson gets back next month. We're in the process of looking at alternatives for a new program or amending the current program beyond September 30. So figuring out exactly what changes need to be made. So this allows those individuals or groups that pre-qualified December to, if they are able to find a tenant, apply for the grant or bring it past where they have been on the application process, submit something, and then allow us to bring it back to the CRA trustees for consideration. I believe the amount, let me just, a little small here print-wise, but the amount remaining in the fund for the incentives, sorry, it went out on me here for a second.
$520,000.
It is 500 and... Sorry, little technical difficulties here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Yep. Appreciate it.
Based on...
And so that is the item.
Questions for staff on 4.4? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.4?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.4.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.4. Comments, counsel? Ms. Kundoff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Director of the CRA. I think it's a good idea that we discussed this last meeting and that you presented it this time so that it does allow those who have already gone through the process of pre-qualifying, gives them extra time to find tenants. And I think in the end, if we do find tenants, it'll be good for Clearwater and the CRA.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.4. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Maxwell, do you have anything further for the CRA?
Just a quick report. The Dreams of Dolly virtual reality experience at Second Century Studios, it's had more than 2,100 visitors since January when it launched. We're going to be rolling out some... We're going to be rolling out some, some evaluation results at the end of June, which is when the, uh, the exhibit ends. But we've had very positive respondents to date. I believe 90%, over 90% of the survey respondents have been very favorable to both the exhibit and downtown Clearwater. So, we would encourage everyone to, to go visit the exhibit while it's still here. It closes June 30th and I know Amanda plans on talking a little bit about what's going to come next at, at our, at our meeting in June.
Mrs. Maxwell, since you brought up the Dolly, I was meeting with the director of the Dolly Museum the other day and he was asking how it was going. He did not have those figures and I would suggest maybe that we provide that information as opposed to, you know, now or on a regular basis as opposed to waiting until June to get it worked.
We can make sure they've received it.
Okay. He hopes that maybe they would want to extend it too because he, he did express some, some other ideas that they're working on that may be, you know, may fit here in Clearwater too.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
With that, we will adjourn the CRA meeting of May the 13th and continue on with our work session. Agenda Item 3.1. Mr. Horn.
At this time, Monica Mitchell is going to introduce the city's external auditors. They will present the comprehensive annual financial report for the year 2018.
Good morning. Monica Mitchell, Assistant Finance Director. Our, we're here to present the audit for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018. Our audit was performed by Cherry Beckett for the fourth year and Carlos Lopez, our audit manager with the firm, is here to give the presentation.
Good morning. Glad to be here today. As Monica mentioned, my name is Carlos Lopez. I'm an audit manager with Cherry Beckett and I wanted to, professional standards require us to communicate to the governing body, the oversight body, the results of our audit and the manner in which it was conducted and certain other matters. And we did so in our meeting a couple of weeks ago on April 29th with the Audit Committee. We had a very productive and fruitful discussion. I'd like to recognize and appreciate, thank the Audit Committee for their active participation in that meeting, the results of which we'll go over now in the, the handout that you have in front of you. I'd like to bring your attention to page three of that handout, the summary of deliverables tab. First and foremost, our audit opinion on page one, and all these page numbers correspond to the page number within the CAFER, the larger comprehensive annual financial report in front of you. Our audit opinion on page one is an unmodified opinion, which is the clean opinion in the highest form of assurance that you can obtain. Next, on, related to internal controls, we issued our report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance on page 179. There was only one material weakness noted in that related to classification between funds of housing receivable. Also, related to grants, the report on compliance of each major program on internal controls over compliance on page 181, that is also an unmodified, clean opinion. We're also required to issue a management letter in performance with standards required by the Florida Auditor General. That's located on page 191. That is a no-comment letter, which is a good letter, which means we have nothing that came to our attention that required to be included within that report. We're also engaged to report on the compliance with local government and investment policies. Again, this is an unmodified, clean opinion. Also, I'd like to bring your attention to page 187 of the CAFER, the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. This summarizes certain financial statement and grant-related findings. Other reports not included in the CAFER is the report on schedule of revenues and expenditures related to emergency medical services. Again, this is an unmodified, clean opinion. Moving on to the next page, I'd like to also bring your attention to significant accounting policies. These are described in Note 1 of the CAFER. The policies are in accordance with U.S. GAAP, which are Accounting Principles Generally Accepted in the United States of America. These accounting policies are consistent with industry practices and standards. During the Audit Committee meeting, we also discussed new and upcoming standards, the most notable of which is the current year implementation of Governmental Accounting Standard Number 75 related to post-employment benefits other than pensions. This is discussed further in Note I E. of the CAFER. As far as new upcoming standards, the Governmental Accounting Standard Number 87 regarding leases will take effect soon. We discussed that during the Audit Committee meeting. And as far as significant or unusual, there was a one-time accounting treatment in the financial statements related to a change in estimate affected by accounting principles. This was related to depreciation, a change in the method for depreciation that caused a prior period adjustment. That's discussed further in Notes 78 and page, or page 78 and page 104 of the CAFER. That concludes what I have prepared to cover today, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Lopez? Clarify this one material weakness. Is this the first time that you've discovered?
Yeah. The material weakness is a classification of an audit finding related to internal controls. And the reason it's considered a material weakness is because our audit opinion is based on, in our, we have several audit opinions based on each individual fund. And the funds in question are the two housing funds and these, because of their size, had a higher, had a much lower materiality threshold. And there was an adjustment that was identified during our audit procedures where a receivable in one fund should have been recorded in another fund. And due to the lower materiality threshold for these funds, we're obligated to report it as a material weakness.
But is it a, you know, problem that we need to address immediately? Because I'm, I'm reading in here and it says that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of an entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected or corrected on a timely basis.
Yes, that's always a possibility. The material weakness was identified during the course of the audit procedures and has since been corrected. It has to do with how things were accounted for on the different housing...
You said the key word. It has been corrected?
Yes, sir.
That's all I needed to hear. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Very good. Thank y'all.
Thanks for your time.
Good job, I guess, to our staff, right?
Absolutely. Every year, it's, it's very easy to, to mention Monica's credit and Jay's and their team.
Superb. Thank you. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 4.1.
Approve an increase to purchase order number 18001102 with Ultimate CNG LLC in the amount of $275,600 for the period June 1, 2019 through August 30th, 2019 to provide mobile compressor services. Clearwater Natural Gas Filling Station, approve agreement number 9. UCNG Daily Temporary Mobile CNG Fueling Service for Clearwater Gas in Clearwater, Florida and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill.
Good morning. Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas System. This is our mobile compressor unit that we've continued to have to utilize at the station because of one of our units being down for an extended period of time. Last month, when I presented to you for an increase, we were working on fixing the problem with the mechanical problem with it. The technicians unfortunately have not been able to fix that problem. So, we are still continuing to need services, mobile filling services right now. This, uh, this here is for three months instead of doing month by month because our permanent solution is supposed to be coming in in August of this year. I'm hearing that it might be, it might come in in July, but we're projecting it to be August and that this contract would take us to the end of August and that would have two reliable compressor units onsite at any given time. So, that way, we're not relying on just one unit to work our station. You have to answer any questions?
Questions for staff on 4.1? Mr. Albert?
Well, it's disappointing that it keeps dragging on and dragging on, but I guess, are we pretty firm on the date where the new...
We are. We, you know, we ordered it, council, you all ordered it in January, excuse me, in February and July, August was the timeframe. You know, I've been saying August just to be a little more on the conservative side, but yes, everything is indicating that the schedule is still on, that the unit will be delivered here in sometime in the July, August timeframe at this time.
And so, when it gets delivered, how long does it take to set it up and get it, get it running?
Well, commissioning usually takes about a week to a week and a half or so to get the unit up online. In this case here, since it's a mobile unit, we're not having to do infrastructure at the site. So, it is basically connecting the gas line to the unit and then operating it at that point. So, the commissioning, excuse me, would not take as long as a fixed mounting unit would. Okay.
I guess we don't have any control over certain things, but the costs keep going up and up and up. Would it have been better off if we had just shut down the facility and, and saved all that money or are we recouping the money that we're spending on these portable units?
We're going to be recouping that money as we move forward. We, we are, as we go right now, keep in mind that Solid Waste is still saving all their money on a monthly basis using the station. They have not absorbed any of the cost, added costs. That's all been stated at our department level. And the residents are still getting their trash picked up in a timely manner as well. You know, if we only had one compressor unit there, we would be, you know, we could operate in that fashion, on a delayed fashion. However, if that one unit that works fails, then you're at the mercy of having somebody come back in and that might take two or three days to get that unit back in there. And we don't want to be put in that kind of a situation. We don't want to disrupt the residents' trash pickup. That's been our primary goal since day one.
One question here. Thank you. Paul. A lot of the public maybe is not aware, a lot of our equipment runs on CNG, so we have to do this. But my concern would be that in future months as we go forward and we have to look at rates and stuff like that, that this would not be rolled back to consumers. This would not come into an equation to have them pay for this. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels again on this, but this is, you know, cost beyond our control. But when we look at rate changes and we look at the loss of, I mean, I think we're upwards of, just since I've been here in December, I've seen this happen a few times. So, I know we're up over half a billion, maybe three quarters of a billion dollars in this. So, you know, I'm, as a loss or operating cost, I don't think this would be fair to roll back to the consumers.
I, I, I don't think we've ever done anything...
Okay. I just, and I'm just publicly stating that, right?
The rate changes are a fluctuation of the market, you know, so that fluctuates.
Well, the reason I bring that up, city manager, is because of, I, I recall what Duke Energy and Progress Energy Florida Power has done when we have major problems. It's rolled back to the consumer. So, that's the reason I brought that up.
All right.
Consent?
Yes.
Agenda Item 5.1.
Approve contract for women's softball and softball services to Michelle Smith, Inc. of St. Petersburg, Florida in the amount of $60,000 and two one-year renewal terms in accordance with Code of Ordinances, Section 2.564, exceptions to bid and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Lockwood.
Good morning. Mike Lockwood, Assistant Director of Parks Recreation Department. In front of you today is a promotional service contract with Michelle Smith, Inc. Michelle's been instrumental in recruiting international, national, Division 1 softball teams in the area and was one of our biggest advocates in creating our partnership with ESPN and developing the St. Pete Clearwater Elite Invitational. Michelle also works with our cosponsored groups and develops camps and clinics and is a, a board member for our Clearwater for Youth partner and provides scholarships also for local high school student athletes looking to pursue softball in their college career. If approved, this will give us the ability to continue working with Michelle and promoting our destination as one of the premier softball destinations in the country. If I have any questions?
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 5.1? Consent?
Yes.
5.2.
Approve a proposal by construction manager at risk Deloto &amp; Sons, Inc. of Tampa, Florida in the amount of $2,168,713 for construction of a multipurpose building and countryside sports complex located at 3060 McMullen Booth Road and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Lockwood.
Mike Lockwood, Assistant Director of Parks Recreation Department. 2017, city council approved a contract with Wondermaker Jensen for their engineering and architectural services to develop several spaces at the countryside sports complex. In front of you this morning is a proposal from Deloto &amp; Sons to construct these buildings. The buildings consist of new restrooms, concession, press box areas along with office space and storage area for the countryside junior cougars, Clearwater chargers, and our Clearwater cross group. Funding for this project is part of a city VIP along with TDC, FREDP grants and a partnership with the city of Safety Harbor as well as a few of our cosponsored groups who'll be utilizing that space. If I have to answer any questions?
Questions on 5.2? Consent? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hamilton. After this is constructed and all these other organizations are being able to use, you know, space in it, do they, do we calculate maintenance cost of the facility into what those organizations contribute to us?
The long-term, meaning like the general maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. That's factored in, in the spaces. So, we'll work with building maintenance and part of getting that cost and part of their funds, collecting their register, sorry, their rec cards and several of the registrations that go along with that program will help support that building.
Yes.
6.1.
Amend the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Section 4.0.2, miscellaneous provisions adding subsection G, missing benefit recipients relating to the Clearwater Police Officer's supplementary pension and retirement plan and pass the appropriate ordinance on first reading. Chief Slatter?
Chief Slatter. Chief Dan Slatter of the Police Department. This is kind of a housekeeping thing. We're seeking to amend this particular ordinance to bring in compliance with recommended language from the Internal Revenue Code and the IRS guidelines and some recent litigation case law. It essentially is adding a bullet to deal with the obligation of plan to locate recipients of missing benefits and to make them home. If you want to have an answer.
Questions for staff on 6.1? Chief, no questions, I guess, but since you made the front page of the paper today, explain why you were on the front page of the paper?
I haven't seen it.
Oh. About the texting?
Yeah. Oh, did they? Well, the new, there's been a bill recently passed that will provide for law enforcement officers to have a primary ability to stop you for texting. In the past, it was what was referred to as a secondary violation. We would have to stop you for something else and then issue citation. Now, we can proactively do that and, and if you're in school zones and work zones, you need to be hands-free and can't hold a device. So, we will use that as a good opportunity to engage the public and try to encourage them to, to operate a vehicle in a safe manner. Clearwater's a safe place to drive and be, but we do have pedestrian fatalities as we did over the weekend. And so, we want everybody to be alert all the time behind the wheel.
And this new, if law takes effect, if it was...
July 1, I believe.
July 1. Okay. Yeah.
In the spot.
You, you may mention the fact that you'd seen somebody driving with their knees on the steering wheel while they were eating and, and reading a book.
Reading a book.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've seen that over the, you know, you spend a lot of time as a police officer on the road, so you see a lot of silly things. I've seen people putting on makeup while driving with their knees. I've seen people read a book while on their knees. So, I've seen some silly stuff and I've seen some really horrific accidents. I'd be more than happy to try to educate people to drive safe.
And, and are we going to be doing, is Joel here? Are we going to be doing something like that, like a public service announcement, maybe on our web page, just to remind people of that too, Chief?
Absolutely. There'll be a kind of a, a public campaign that'll initiate once the blog goes and back through our traffic team.
Very good. Thank you. This, 6.1 will be on our agenda for Thursday night. 7.1.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low, medium density residential district for 1204 Norwood Avenue and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Corvair.
Morning. This voluntary application involves a single parcel with a total of 20.27 acres. It is occupied by a single family home and the applicant is requesting the annexation in order to receive sanitary seawall service and solid waste from the city.
Any questions on 7.1? This will be on our agenda for Thursday night. 7.2.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low, medium density residential district for 3019. Let this to drive and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Corvair, again.
Right. This voluntary annexation involves a single parcel of land totaling .39 acres. The applicant is requesting the annexation in order to receive sanitary seawall service from the city as part of the Capeport Terra Sanitary Seawall Expansion Project. The property will also receive solid waste service upon annexation.
Questions on 7.2? Be on our agenda Thursday night. 7.3.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low, medium density residential LMBR district for 3057... for 3057 Terrace View Lane and 3040 Grandview Avenue, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading.
This application includes two parcels located within the Cape Cod Terra sanitary seaworth expansion project, which are occupied by two single-family homes with a total of .38 acres. These properties are subject to agreements to annex that were recorded in 2016.
Questions on 7.3? We'll have that on our agenda Thursday night, thank you. 8.1.
Authorize a blanket purchase order with Xylem, Inc. of Apopka, Florida, in the annual amount of $500,000, with the option for two one-year term extensions for the purchase of fly pumps, replacement parts, and factory authorized service. Mr. Porter.
Good morning, David Porter, Public Utilities Director. I'm here this morning to ask you to authorize the issuance of a blanket purchase order to Xylem Incorporated of Apopka to provide us with pumps and parts and service for the majority of the city's pumps in the wastewater division. We've been using fly pumps and standardizing on them for many, many years, and they've been offering us a pretty substantial discount for the use of their products, some nine-and-a-half percent based on their list price that they charge other people. In order to be able to maintain various pumps that we have, we can't have multitudes of different types of pumps, because we would have to stock parts for each of those pumps. We would have to have training for each of those pumps. We would have to have service people that are aware of how to service each of the pumps. And that just doesn't work for the number of pumps that we have. So for many years, the city's been standardized on fly pumps, and we're just continuing that arrangement here. Do I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions on 8.1? Consent? 9.1.
Authorize a purchase order to J.D. Smith Pest Control, Clearwater, Florida, for the main library termite treatment extended warranty not to exceed annual amount of $11,541, including two one-year renewal terms, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute, say, Mr. Whitey.
Good morning, Tom Whitey, Building Maintenance Superintendent. On May 7, 2018, the City Manager authorized and approved J.D. Smith to tent the main library at a cost of $96,175. The main library was tented and treated for drywood termites on May 31, 2018. Staff is requesting approval for the annual extended warranty to J.D. Smith Pest Control for re-inspections and re-treatments as necessary, with two additional one-year renewals.
Questions on 9.1? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. 10.1.
amend the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Section 2.251, changing the composition of the Sisters Cities Advisory Board to include a representative from the Clearwater Arts Alliance, Inc., and pass ordinance 9248-19 on first reading council members. The item before you is basically just to update the organization's name. There was a name change when the board was originally created. The Clearwater Arts Foundation was its official name. It has since been dissolved, and now its new name is the Clearwater Arts Alliance, Inc.
Any other questions on 10.1? We'll have that on our agenda Thursday night. 11.1, Ms. Aiken.
Request authority to initiate civil action on behalf of the city against the estate of Mark Leonard Frank, Sr., to recover $822.51 for outstanding utility customer service bill. Mr. Hall.
Mayor, Members of Council, if you've heard, this is an item seeks authority to institute an action against the estate of Mr. Leonard. He has unpaid utility bills. We filed a claim against the estate, declined to pay it, and objected to our claim, and that puts us in a position of either having to forego the claim or file an action. So we're requesting authority to file the action.
Questions on 11.1? Consent? 11.2.
Request authority to institute civil action on behalf of the city against Calvin Lad to enforce an order of the Clearwater Municipal Code Enforcement Board. Mr. Fueno.
Good morning, Ms. Aiken. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Michael Fueno, Assistant City Attorney. So our agenda item, request authority to initiate a civil action to enforce a code board order. The code board order was initiated based on finding that property was unsafe, requiring an abatement period. When that abatement period last, the city did have the authority under the order to enter onto the property to remedy the condition. Normally, we would just execute on the order, however, in this case, at least up to the last couple of weeks, the individual was living in the property. So the code board doesn't exactly have those sort of enforcement authority to rip someone out of their property. What we will have is, we'll ask the judge for judgment to allow us to go onto the property and ask for that. Since the agenda item has been entered into the system, two things have occurred. One, the individual has apparently vacated the property and has left and moved to Minnesota, is my understanding, and may be on his way to California, the property. So it's currently vacant. The other issue is that, the other thing that happened is that a potential buyer has entered into a, executed sales contract for the, and I've been in contact with the realtor. We may be able to enter into a compliance agreement with that, where the new buyer will agree to rehab the property. I've seen the rehab schedule, looked, and passed it on to our building official, who has said that that will correct all of the unsafe conditions on the property. So my hope is that this request is merely academic in nature, and we'll never actually have to file a lawsuit.
Questions on 11.2? This is a property that for really a long time has been out of compliance. Is that correct, Mr. Fueno?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And the property owner hasn't cooperated with the neighbors, with the code board, or?
No, he's been completely unresponsive to our notices, the code board orders, except that once this agenda item has come in, suddenly he's vacated the property and produced a sales contract. So my intuition tells me that by pushing this issue, we've actually been able to kind of spur some action on that.
Consent?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your work on that. You and the code board spent a lot of time in our neighborhood services, compliance officers.
Report on letter of interest process for the adaptive reuse of former fire station 45. Mr. Maxwell.
Yes, Michael Maxwell, Assistant City Manager. Back in January, we put out a letter of interest for Fire Station 45. You may recall, last summer, we brought forward a demo item for the building. It was then requested that we take a look and see if there was anyone out there that wanted to reuse the building for any specific use. We received one response to the, to the request for letters of interest, and it was from the Church of Scientology and related to a nonprofit use on the site where they intended to rehab the building and then lease it out to, to a nonprofit of some sort, not really determined specifically who that would be. The recommendation from, from staff and the CRA is to, is to move forward with a demolition of the building and to not move forward on surplusing or removing the building from service, or not the building, the property from the city's ownership until we have some further answers on the joint use facility, City Hall, and the Parks Street Station, the PSTA, you know, the multi-million facility. So that is our recommendation. We do recommend moving forward back with the demolition. The previous quote bid is expired. We would need to go through that process to, to rebid the demolition.
Questions on 12.1? So what are you, are you asking to put on the agenda or for us to approve Thursday night the demolition, or?
No, really, we, there's nothing to approve necessarily at the moment. We're just looking for some direction on how you would like to proceed. If demolition is the way you'd like to proceed, we will begin the process of rebidding, and then eventually we will bring that demolition bid back to you for consideration.
Counsel, I don't know about you guys, but, you know, I think most of us have been in other parts of the country and have seen fire stations repurposed and reused. And, you know, even a couple of years ago, I was in Rapid City, and they made a fire station into a brew pub. And I keep hearing over and over again from the business community, and especially the downtown partnership, that that's an ideal place to have a micro brewery put up. Well, you know, it's time that these people who have these great ideas to come forward, and here's a facility that would work, as opposed to just talking, you know, here's something that you can do. And I'm disappointed, A, in that, you know, the downtown partnership, among others, who keep telling us that they have these ideas, doesn't come forth with plans for the redevelopment. And I'm almost hesitant at this point to say, let's go forward with the demolition, because we don't know what we would get in its place, you know, because, you know, maybe, you know, somebody out there knows someone who in fact is willing to repurpose the building. So those are my thoughts. Mr. Hamilton.
Mike, do we have an assessment of the building itself? I mean, is there asbestos removal that needs to be done and everything before it can be repurposed?
Asbestos removal in the building, correct?
So we've got to, you know, if we're going to remain the landlord, we're going to be responsible for doing the asbestos removal before we can repurpose it for anything, anything else, correct?
I believe we would do that, correct?
And I wonder, can we, I guess, reissue an RFP, but kind of make it more, we're interested in it being, A, for commercial purposes, not for nonprofit. I mean, I'm not, we've got plenty of office space and other things in this city for nonprofits, in my opinion. I think we need, you know, commercial development. So I think we need to, I don't know, can we make the RFP say, you know, we want a commercial use of the property? You know, bring us some ideas?
I think we could definitely do that. I would only recommend that because we don't have the answers for the joint use facility study, or the, or if it's just going to be City Hall, the City Hall site. Those conversations, which will occur in July with the, as it relates to the joint use facility, recommend we don't move forward with necessarily any sort of RFP, looking for an additional use, as we just did the letter of interest, and wait to see if we're going to need any of that property for another use that relates to municipal use or for kids.
I don't disagree with that. I think we'll probably just need to tread water for a couple more months until we have a better view of the landscape.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yeah, if I could recall, originally, when the new fire station was built, they moved out of the old fire station. It was about a year or so, year maybe after that was built, that came to council, and I think the concern was, don't knock it down. Maybe we could have, you know, a RFP for some business that may want to move in. Unfortunately, it didn't happen. I understand, though, during that process, I mean, we couldn't even go into the building because there were safety concerns walking around. I mean, it's in pretty bad shape, I understand. So I guess my concern would be, is it a danger to the public? I mean, it's obviously boarded up, not boarded up, but it's locked, and is there any safety issues with that building that we need to talk about getting it demoed immediately?
Scott Rice, Engineering Department.
Yeah, there was some issues with that, with the exterior cladding on that building, and that was all going to have to be replaced as part of the upgrades to that building to make it usable. So, you know, with that exterior cladding, in the condition that it's in, we have some safety concerns over there. Plus, inside the building, I don't, were you in the building? We took a tour, and it's just, you know, things falling out of the ceiling, walls falling down. It's in very bad condition.
Well, I mean, that could be one of the reasons nobody's doing any kind of RFP on it, because it would probably be better to do something on just ground there instead of repurposing a building that's in such sad shape. So I'm fine moving forward with demolition, because maybe it'll be something that would appeal to somebody better, being, and then the city could use it. I understand the city needed to have parking there on a part of it they didn't want to give up, so that's just my opinion.
Just to clarify, it isn't parking that we would use that piece of property for. It's for an additional building for the police department, on the police department side. So it's not necessarily parking. It would be an actual structure of some sort.
Okay. But the city, they are, we are using-
There is a use, yes, yeah.
Mr. Pogles.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to respond to the mayor's comments about calling out individual partners in the community, whether it's the DCMA, whether it's the downtown partnership. These are all people that still believe in downtown. They're invested in downtown. When I was on the City Council in 2012 to 16, everybody thought I was nuts for the city going forward with trying to do an adaptive reuse project with the post office. We didn't all agree, but we at least had three of us go forward with it. So to me, it's about timing. When do people believe in Clearwater? That's why we're doing Imagine Clearwater, to get people to believe, to really make people aware that we have great opportunity. Many of them have already taken the step to come forward and invest in downtown, and several members of the downtown partnership have. Daniel Zikejevs has invested many, many millions in this city and has put his money where his mouth is, as have other members. But to call out individual groups within the downtown area partners and say they're not doing their job, well, I think it's a pretty long laundry list of potential problems why these people aren't stepping forward. And as far as the fire station goes, proximity, location, talk of intermodal center, talk about joint government facility, there's a lot of balls in the air. So I think we need to continually encourage our partners, not demean them and call them up. So I, irregardless of my past involvement with the partnership, I don't think that's the right track to take. Mr. Mayor?
Well, I apologize if I offended you, Mr. Pogles.
I said it had nothing to do with my involvement.
But I'm sorry, you know, they may have invested millions of dollars, but they keep coming back to us saying we haven't done enough, and that, you know, downtown Clearwater is not like downtown St. Petersburg, not like downtown Tampa, not like downtown Dunedin, not like downtown Safety Harbor, and I can go on and on and on.
It's not just the partnership saying that. It's many, many groups.
But there's a big difference in the accomplishments of the downtown partnership in St. Petersburg compared to the downtown partnership in Clearwater. And what they've done in St. Petersburg in large part is due to the efforts of the downtown partnership and the investments that they've made in the community. So obviously, we have a difference of opinion.
I agree. And in leadership, the situation has to come into play. And then you have to talk about Vinnick, and you have to talk about Edwards, and then you also have to talk about the mayors of individual towns and their council that makes up the decision. So I'm not saying it's all of council's fault. I'm not saying it's your fault. I'm saying Clearwater has a unique set of circumstances that has prevented us from moving on. Now, that's not to say we shouldn't celebrate our successes. We have. We're moving forward with the most incredible bluff opportunity of any county, any city. They don't have what we have. But all I'm saying is, we shouldn't call out our partners. We need to promote and encourage, and we all need to continue to work together.
But when those partners criticize us for not doing things, Mr. Pogles, then they ought to get some criticism themselves. And this was a key example. This fire station, we were presented, you know, we were told, make it available, do an RFP, a brew pub is going to come in. And I'm still waiting for that brew pub to come in.
There was a council member that was here that was really pushing for that, that was really pushing to-
And so was the downtown partnership.
No.
Again, okay, there's a difference of opinion, Mr. Pogles. Let's just let it go at that, okay?
That's fine.
So you're going to come back to us?
Well, it depends on whether or not it sounded like there were some council members that were interested in moving forward demo, and some that wanted to wait. They just, if you have any direction on that.
Mr. Kunda.
I didn't weigh in yet on the-
Yes, sir.
-on the building. I think probably the best idea is demolition of it and repurposing the land itself.
Well, as I said before, I'm not worried about, you know, demo versus leaving the building. The location itself, demoing it now doesn't do it. We still don't know what the location is, which the thing we're all still waiting on is the joint use study with the county. We can't do anything, we can't commit anything anywhere until we get, until we find out where that's going. Because once that, once we know the direction of the joint use proposition, then the rest of the pieces of the puzzle start falling into place. But we've got to get to that point first, I believe.
Mayor, Counsel, can you give us the August?
Yeah, yeah.
And let the dust settle?
That's what I'm doing.
Mr. Albrecht.
Maybe we could get a joint demolition with City Hall and the fire station, and see if we can get a better price.
Well, I think we will probably have a discussion about City Hall shortly, and then that would, because I don't think you all are in agreement on City Hall. So you'll need to reason that out, just for us to execute your suggestion to include City.
Yeah. Okay. So waiting until August?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in-
And, and if something breaks on the joint use thing before then, of course, we'll
bring it to, I mean, we're just waiting on that, on that consultant, uh, who is, who is refreshing the feasibility study that was done in 2008. That's what the county is waiting on. Once we have that information, then we sit down and talk about, you know, how do we live together, uh, as two local government, you know, entities, if we can, bring any decisions back to you that are policy issues that you need to sort out, uh, and they need to sort out on their side, and then I think we'll, we'll have a pretty good idea as to whether this is a joint project that has any life to it. And if it doesn't, then we're off on our path, uh, and then we can, can move out. But that's the, that's the idea.
Twelve point two.
Imagine Clearwater update, Michael?
Yeah, I had a series of some excellent meetings with you all last week, with one exception, Councilman Albrighton was, uh, out of town and I have not had a chance to meet with him. So, I would like to, uh, I've got a meeting scheduled with Councilman Albrighton in the morning, so I'd like to have the, the benefit of that meeting, uh, and then, so I can kind of collect my thoughts and discuss this matter with you tomorrow at the, uh, tomorrow afternoon with the strategic budgetary planning. I think actually that's a very good, uh, time and place to talk about you, uh, talk with you about priorities and, and kind of funding tracks, where we want to try to go in a big picture sort of way, so, uh, if we could do that tomorrow afternoon after I've had a chance to chat with Mr. Councilman Albrighton, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Ms. Eichen, do you have anything further for us?
No, sir.
Okay, agenda item fourteen point one, Mr. Albrighton.
Okay, last council meeting, I asked that we bring, uh, discussion forward on the parking study that was done, I think February 19th it was available and, uh, so we can, we could talk about, uh, talk about the, that study and, um, I was, I guess, are you going to do a presentation for us?
Just a quick one, yep.
Okay.
So, Michael Maxwell is the city manager. Um, so, uh, it's Councilman Roberton, uh, stated, uh, last, automatically, um, last, uh, in the most recent February, uh, we finished up the report for, uh, parking for, uh, the downtown area. Now, we have a, uh, we have since, uh, it has been brought to our attention that there were some errors in the report which the consultant is currently fixing. They relate to, uh, the labeling and the identification of a couple numbers that they need to, they need to clarify. So, the amended report should be coming out within the next couple days. Now, uh, just to bring us back to what the original purpose of the, the study was, it was really to help us to identify a, um, a, a strategic approach to parking in the downtown. Um, over the years, we, we haven't necessarily had something really focused on downtown. We have a lot of different, uh, elements of the community, the beach, downtown countryside, uh, the neighborhoods, so, uh, we really wanted to get something specific to downtown so that we could, we could, you know, attack it in a very strategic manner. So, this was the first step in the creation of that, um, of that plan. Now, the area, uh, the map that you see above, uh, does include all of the, it's going automatically on me, um, does include different parking facilities, uh, the red ones are city or county facilities, uh, that are, that are lots, the blue ones are, are the garages, um, the green ones are private garages and then the, the purple is, uh, are private lots throughout, throughout that area. Now, you'll notice that, uh, one area, uh, that does not, that isn't marked, uh, it's over, uh, here, uh, relates to one of the properties that we transferred to the CRA earlier today, that, that's because when the, when the study started, it didn't include, uh, we, we didn't own it yet, we hadn't, we hadn't had the transaction completed yet. So, that includes the, uh, the one on the corner of MLK and, and Cleveland. Now, as it relates to the overall numbers, and these things will shift a little bit, um, the consultant, um, identified that there were twelve hundred and sixty-three, uh, park, public parking spaces in, in the downtown core area, uh, so, not the entire CRA, but the core area itself, which is, uh, which is this red outlined area here. Okay? Um, yeah, they applied an effective parking supply factor to that of eighty-five percent, um, which, uh, which brought the effective parking supply down to ten seventy-four, uh, and they also identified, um, a demand, uh, both now and in the future, uh, and so for 2019, you can see that the parking demand is shown as five hundred and ninety-one spaces in that core area, um, for a, uh, for a surplus of four hundred and eighty-four currently. Uh, that doesn't mean that, uh, they're, uh, means they're within the core, doesn't necessarily mean they're as close to, uh, businesses as they may want, but they are within the core area. Um, what we're really focused on in the next few months, um, is first to correct the report and have the, um, the consultant come in and provide a, um, a, uh, presentation on the report itself and allow you to ask that individual some questions. That should be in June of 2019. Uh, the, uh, there are also a couple areas that the, uh, the consultant called out that I wanted to just bring, um, bring timelines to, um, as far as the wayfinding downtown, um, that, that project has been, has transported from planning to engineering for implementation, the CRA has it funded, uh, so, uh, we're, uh, we're on the implementation train for that, it should, uh, we should be moving on fairly quickly. Uh, at the next meeting, we'll have a little better idea of what the dates are going to look like for that wayfinding project. As far as public surplus additions, public supply additions, um, we talked a little bit earlier about the joint use facility. July is when it looks like we're gonna, we're gonna have the consultant come in to talk to us, either they're going to speak to the county first, as the county is the lead on the project, um, that's likely to be in June, and then we would follow up in the July conversation. So, that is, that is coming to a close. Also, the PSTA multimodal site, um, they are piggybacking to some degree on our, um, our, our study, so, that's going to come a little af- a little bit after that, uh, that July timeline. We have it estimated at September 2019, but we're not necessarily driving the train on that, that's, that's more PSTI, uh, but they are looking for some information from us. Uh, and then finally, um, aimed at, after we finish all of these different pieces, coming forward with, you know, a strategic downtown parking plan sometime in fall of 2019 is the, is the intent. So, just to provide you some additional timelines and I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Albright?
Okay, I had a chance to go through this report, uh, which is a lot of numbers.
It is.
Uh, and just some things that, I'm, I'm not going to hold you to this today because there are some flawed data and numbers in here and I'm glad to see that they're working on those. But, on page six, there's a list of privately owned, city-county owned parking facilities analyzed, it says. It's also reflected in a chart, I think, or a, a map on the prior page. And I, I, I think if I look at this, uh, report more as a just what we have in this whole area, there's really nothing here as to, like you just said, we have a surplus of four hundred something parking spaces, but I can tell you, um, it doesn't reflect that in, on Cleveland Street or any businesses on Cleveland Street, which is what we're really trying to, with our incentive programs through CRA, build up, um, in fact, most investors that come and they look, say, I can't do anything there because there's no parking. And so, when I'm looking through this list on page six, I see residential, private, 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 residential, and then they, they list these parking lots, and I don't know if the numbers are in those parking lots that are part of the formula that you're telling, you know, that you're presenting in this, but I can tell you what, um, take for instance, the Nolan, I mean, we're not going to be able to use any parking spaces in the Nolan.
Right.
Uh, we're not going to be able to use any parking spaces at Crum, we're not going to be able to use any parking spaces at the Marina for downtown. So, those are the things that I want to make sure that are not reflected in our great surplus of parking that this report says we have.
And these privately owned ones at, at the top here, um, A through Z, these were not included in that, in that count, that twelve sixty-three and the effective parking number of, uh, right around a thousand. Only the city and county owned parking facilities were included in that number. The reason we collected data for the private lots were to try to identify areas where we could have some sort of partnership with those privately owned lots, some of them we have some opportunity to do that, some, like the Nolan, probably not, uh, but, uh, we did want to identify those things as we get into the second stage of this, which is the stra- strategic planning portion and identifying where we might be able to have some, um, some agreements with various entities.
Okay, well, um, I, I really don't feel like I should go into any more because there are some, I think some of the data, the base data is, so some of the charts that the days ba- that the base data is based on will throw that away off, so there's no sense in talking about that until they come back and fix that, but, um, when did you say we'd be able to?
So, so in June, um, I'm not sure if it's going to be the first meeting or the second meeting, it depends on how quickly they get the information back to me, um, but, uh, hopefully it'll be in that, hopefully it'll be in that first meeting. As soon as it comes in and we're able to, um, to distill it and make sure that it's correct, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it out to the council. So, either the first meeting in June or the second meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Hamilton?
I hope it's the first meeting because I will not be here for the second meeting, but, uh, in June, but, um, I, I think what we need to be doing now and we need to be letting the, uh, downtown merchants, downtown property owners and prospective people who are interested in thinking of coming into downtown, let them know that we are committed. We, they need to know, we're committed to addressing the parking issues. We can't, we can't make that parking appear overnight, we can't do that. But, we understand the issues. Daytime, you know, with what's going on, I know people talk about the Garden Street Garage and all the empty spaces, there's a, you know, we're, even though the spaces are unoccupied, they're being paid for on a, on a monthly lease by, uh, property owners. And, you know, do we want to negotiate with those property owners that, you know, don't have a tenant right now but is, but has those spaces so that we can open those spaces up during the day? I don't know. But, and as soon as he gets a tenant, then those spaces no longer become available for, for public use. So, i- it, there's a, the balance there, but we've got to, again, like I said, we've got to make a commitment and people need to know we're committed to addressing the parking issue so that prospective tenants of, you know, downtown restaurant space, retail space are, will want to come. And like I say, we can't put parking, you, if, if you want it to be, look at, look at St. Pete. Beach Drive and, and the other areas of St. Pete became vibrant because parking became available within a reasonable distance. So, we've got to keep that in mind when we do ours. We can't put parking, again, e- even before, we kept saying, well, there's six hundred spaces down on the waterfront. You don't put your parking at one end or the other of an area you want to, to create, uh, traffic in, you want the parking to be located more centrally so that it can feed in all directions. So, um, you know, we've all talked about it and, and I mean, I'll, I'm really going to forward and I'm crossing my fingers that the county is interested in doing something and the PSTA, uh, bus terminal area right now, I think, is an absolute home run for a multi-level parking garage of a size to be determined, but, you know, that would be parking that during the day would be for city and county purposes and additional public parking and then at night, it's an, a tremendous amount of, of parking for nighttime use. And I also said in, in our last meeting, as far as the bluff in Imagine Clearwater, we're taking all those spaces off the front, off the, off the waterfront, which desperately needs to be done for Imagine Clearwater, but we need to let people know that, you know, I think there needs to be a parking component in that general area as well that will, that will feed and service the park itself. So, um, you know, we've got opportunities, we just need to, you know, people need to understand, we are committed to, and as far as I'm concerned, where I sit, I'm committed to, to trying to address these issues, I can't make it happen overnight, but I understand the problems, I understand the desires, but, you know, we need a little bit of, uh, you know, you gotta give us a little bit of time because, you know, this is not the kind of thing that can happen overnight.
Mr. Poglay?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Maxwell, this, if the decisions we're going to make for Imagine Clearwater, for downtown, are based on the company that we hire and we're to assume they're experts and you tell us that they got to come back to fix and make corrections, do we have anybody on staff, did we verify any of this report? Because I would, I will tell you that six hundred and ninety-two, that number you gave us is not correct, it's more like a thousand. When you consider the on-street part, and I'm not even talking about the size of the cone, which still says the core is Missouri Avenue, which, if it's the core, then all city staff should park on Missouri Avenue, we should walk downtown. But, if I.
Or on Myrtle, on that red line.
Okay, on the Myrtle.
Red line, area, yeah.
Well, then, as long as we're there, let me verify this. This was not used in the study, the top half of this graph, right?
Correct.
Okay, just the bottom half?
Only in identifying the private number, not in the, not in the, in the public, the public parking count.
Right. Do, do we verify anything that comes back from the study? Do, we don't?
We, we, we've looked through it.
Where do we get our information? Because you said that it's been pointed out that there's some mistakes, where did, where did we get that?
Actually, uh, former council member Johnson identified a couple errors in the report.
Okay.
And, that's where we, that's where we received the information.
Well, when I look at, when I read the entire study and I see that they didn't take into consideration the hundred and twenty spots on both sides of Drew Street at the loop coming down, that's a significant number, those hundred and twenty. When I look at the CMA property that the city purchased and that number, that number is off by thirty-some spots, that seems like basic data and we're going, if we're going to be making decisions on parking remedies and solution going into the future, um, and the current cost is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars per parking spot, and if we, we get to that conversation, shared government center, we have the number one site picked out. If there's a difference in numbers from six ninety-two and two hundred and thirty-five additional spots that have not been counted that we have to replace, that's an additional four million dollars in, in parking that we would have to, these numbers are extremely relevant as we go forward with our Imagine Clearwater conversations. So, I, I don't know what the remedy or the solution is going forward, but we have to make sure that the data is exactly correct, that the cone is not too far out, that we're taking into consideration, um, and I'm all on, I'm all on board about having these relationships with private property owners to, to come up with arrangements in the interim to address the long-term solu- short-term remedy to a long-term problem, but who of these property owners would we, I mean, we have some parking downtown, but I guess I just would like to see a more clear path going forward and data that's, that's correct.
And the consultant will be able to speak to the, um, how, how on-street parking and off-street parking, how both of those factor in, because these are not on-street parking numbers that have, that have been provided as far as that surplus number. So, he'll, he'll go through his methodology and explain all of that to the, to the council at that time.
Mr. Kunda, do you have it?
I, I appreciate the work that's been done and I, I'm also looking for alternative methods of getting people from where they park to where they want to go. And I think we have to maybe just look at our beach, for example, and all of the other micro modes of transportation to get people from one place to another place downtown. And I think we can use some of these that are a little further away, uh, from Cleveland Street to get people. I mean, we have bicycles that'll seat two or four people in the back, uh, we don't have any horse-drawn carriages yet, those would be kind of sharp. And, um, so I, I think we ought to keep ourselves open to. And so I, I think we ought to keep ourselves open to, both to new technology and technology, old technology that's already being used. And, and anyway, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Well, I'm going to get myself in trouble again, counsel, with one of you, or maybe a couple of you. It's a little disappointing that a former council member has to correct our figures. We don't pay him anything. And we pay our consultants an awful lot to give us good information. I hope that, you know, that, I think, is the most troubling that has come from this discussion today. We shouldn't have to do that. If we can't have confidence in our consultants, then we're in trouble. Because it leads to lack of confidence, not only on behalf of the council, but by the public and staff and the presentations that are being made. And I, I, that just, I, I, that's not good. That's not good. We also have to keep in mind something that, that I've been struggling with. And that is, when we changed Cleveland Street, we took parking away from Cleveland Street with the streetscaping. And, you know, that was the intent from councils, you know, before my time. And parking was provided a block away. And, you know, now we're hearing, "Well, that's not convenient." Well, it may not be, but that's the hand that we've been dealt with. And as Mr. Hamilton has indicated, we're aware of the problem. But as I had indicated before, we cannot build enough parking garages for big events. You're going to have to walk to a big event. You're going to have to have an alternative mode of transportation to a big event. We keep hearing about complete streets and walkable communities. We keep hearing about, you know, giving the new generation, the younger generation, opportunities that we, who are used to driving our car everywhere, you know, they're not going to want. So I think we need to work through this, and we will, but the demands of, of some people saying, "Well, I have to have parking in front of my business," you know, we'll never be able to provide that. You know, no city can provide that. And it's unrealistic to, to think that we can. But we'll continue to do the best that we can, I think, in, in going forward. Just need some patience and understanding. And, you know, they're also, you know, i- i- if parking lots made money, business people would be building them, you know? But it's not a moneymaker, and it falls on government to do it again. There are a lot of property owners in the downtown area who have vacant lots, you know? Well, use it for, you know, let a business work with that property owner to put parking on it. Don't look to the city to build a parking garage, because it's not going to make any money, and we're going to have to bill the entire city the, the cost of that garage. Mr. Albritton, you had something else?
Yeah, just a couple of other things. I think, mentioned in this report was the county parking lot in front of Peace Memorial between Pearson Park and Fort Harrison and Garden. But it only mentioned half that block. It mentioned the county lot. And you mentioned at the beginning that when we were talking CRA business, that PSTA was looking to move over to the lot that the Transportation Center on Myrtle and, and Court. So, they ought to be looking and, and knowing that we're looking at that whole block for parking, not just alternative. And I know that the county joint use, we're looking at, at that lot as well, but it'd be the entire block. They mentioned just half of it. That was one thing I caught. I wanted to make sure that they're aware that we are talking to PSTA about moving. And just to the mayor's comments, I don't think anybody has a problem walking a half block. I mean, when we first did the streetscape, I remember everybody was complaining that we took away the, the diagonal parking and we needed to have it back, because they didn't want to, they didn't want to walk 10 feet out of their way to go to a merchant. But pretty much in every city that we have, within a half to a full block, there's a parking garage that supports that retail restaurant area. St. Pete, if you want to bring them up again, they, I mean, they did a fine example of that, and many other cities do. So, that's all we're looking at. And what I want to get out of this report, for me, what I want to see is what we need to have, what, what is that number that we're looking at in parking we need to have to, for, to develop our downtown? Because it isn't developed now. You could tell me I got 500 space, you know, parking spaces over what we need, and I could tell you that we don't. Okay? So, because we aren't getting the investment down there because of that. So, that's what I'm looking for, is that number. I need to have something that, again, and to make an informed decision, I need to have the right data that I can make the decision on. So I'm looking forward to the report coming back that's been fixed, and I hope it has some of the other things, too, that I've mentioned, fixed as well.
Mr. Proglay.
I would suggest that patrons would be willing to walk even two or three blocks. And the fact that we are, we traded down at the beach parking as infrastructure. We did finally build a garage. I mean, we removed restrictions for parking for Hooters and Ron Johns. I recall that, because we wanted that brand, and we built a parking garage eventually. So, the fact that we are talking, you mentioned that parking as infrastructure for downtown eventually, I think, is, is the right, is the right track. And if this shared government center comes to fruition, there will be an opportunity, I think, for, for a lot of partners to help pay for that structured parking. If it doesn't, then I think the conversation will be still centered around shared parking. But my question is, I guess my suggestion is, is that there are private property owners within the core, within that two or three block range, and the mayor suggested that the businesses should discuss it with them. If we're treating parking as infrastructure, why wouldn't we consider a partnership conversation where the city on behalf of property owners, business owners discusses with XYZ property owners? Because there are, within that three block range, a lot of those parking that are available that would give instant relief, short-term solution, as opposed to a longer-term solution that I know we are all committed to. So, that's my two cents. I'm, I'm trying to fix this short-term.
Let, let's clarify that the parking garages on the beach that were built most recently, one is a private garage.
A partnership.
Surf style is private.
Okay, I always mention the public. Sorry.
And the pumpkin walk is a shared.
Right. That's, that's where I was going to, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Horne.
Yes, Mayor, council, let me, I want to stir up the dust a little bit, based on all the comments that I heard. I want to go back to, and I think Councilmember Hamilton probably remembers this, we go back 15, 16 years, there was a lot of, a very similar kind of parking crisis, of parking discussion relative to the downtown. Ultimately, it led to us eliminating the parking requirement for business, for new businesses. So, it's ironic that we were told that, well, first of all, the complaint was not enough parking. And then the business was, businesses said, you know, "There's a parking burden that you're putting on us, so therefore we're not going to invest in opening a business." So we took that business, that parking requirement out. And I don't think there was any kind of conversation beyond that that said, "Okay, if you can open a business and there isn't parking, then how does that parking issue get addressed?" And, and I'm bringing this up because when we stand in front of groups to talk about parking, you know, it's with that history and that understanding that we have had over time that informs how we respond to the issue. Number two, convenience. As a policy matter, you are going to have to help us determine what is convenient parking. Because it isn't, it isn't the same among you. In the study, it says that an acceptable walking distance is a quarter to a half a mile. Now, do you all agree with that?
No.
Okay. All right. So, so, so that's what the professionals are saying. You have been in other communities where that's really not a burden to walk.
Just in New York City.
Well, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, you're asking for a report to come back and tell you certain things. You want to believe in those numbers. Those numbers are based on an assumption. So what, what you may have to do is accept what, what the consultants have determined based on their experience, and then you may want to move to a different place, you know, just like we did with Imagine Clearwater in an entertainment venue. You know, what was ultimately recommended wasn't, you know, kind of what you wanted. But the bottom line is, is convenience. I don't know what kind of problem I'm trying to solve. Because if it is convenience, I, it seems to me, we've got to reshape how we're looking at this. When we, when I have talked to groups about parking, I've talked about it in two contexts, short-term, long-term. The long-term, Councilmember Albritton, was kind of that space that you just brought up, you know, the two parking lots, the, I'm sorry, the, the PSTA transfer station and then the county lot as a long-term solution. Because of its proximity, it seemed to me to, to kind of address some of that proximity issue. In the short-term, Ms. Thompson said she was going to go back and look at what might be available for us to address, you know, some of the parking needs on a, on a short-term basis. But I think we all acknowledge that on a short-term basis, you know, we don't have that many options. And the options we do have will require the patrons to walk. It's not going to be as convenient, whether it's the CMA lot, whether it's, it's Garden Avenue. I mean, and last Friday, doesn't seem to be a problem with the use of the Garden Avenue Garage. I mean, we, I see a lot of patrons do that. But I do understand, if patrons are telling their business owners that it's too far to walk, or, you know, it's not convenient, then I, I don't know how to manage that. I'm not saying that it, it isn't true for those patrons. What I'm saying is, on a short-term basis, I don't know whether I can eliminate that So, we're, we're going to work with that consultant, but I, I think there's some policy issues here that you all are going to have to sort out so that we give you the information that you're looking for. And if convenience is, 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 is really the litmus test, then I think that has to drive, you know, how we go about approaching this. Because if you just, and I, and I suspect any consultant that you get, who, who's had a history of, of doing this kind of work, you know, is probably going to look at it, you know, with a certain amount of scientific basis and based on experience. It may not be relevant to our market. Councilmember Hamilton, you and I had a recent conversation, and what did you tell me? You know, it's basically, we, we have to put this in context, you know? That's what you said, which translated into convenience. Because if it's not close enough, then the people won't, won't walk. To your point, Councilmember Albritton.
Well, and there, you know, they give us a 10-year study. 10 years is a long time. I, I mean, I, I hope that we're doing our job that in 10 years, Clearwater, downtown will look different than it does today. In 10 years, you may walk a half a mile, because we'll have a vibrant, huge downtown, and people say, "Hey, let's walk in there," just like they do in any other city that's got many different things to go see. But they, you can't say that right off the bat, "Hey, you're going to have to walk." We got lots of other places in the city people are going to go and say, "I don't have to walk a half a mile, so why do we, why should we come down to downtown Clearwater?" That's what's happening here today.
Okay. Mr. Conde.
I just wanted to add, a quarter mile is two and a half blocks. Half a mile is five blocks. I think we all tal- also, there has been, I've heard talk about a valet service that's free to, free to customers that the merchants pay for. And I, I think we ought to encourage things like that to happen. I think it'd be a great interim solution.
Okay. One more.
One more. Well, I, I mean, there's so much, there's a lot of potential. I mean, when we talk about this, I mean, to be honest, at night, there, there's a lot of parking available in downtown, when you, to, to be honest. I mean, now, it's not being utilized maybe at, 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 as well as it could be. I mean, for instance, there's a 500-space parking garage at the county courthouse, two, three blocks that way. People don't even think about parking there unless we're putting 12,000, 13,000 people in Cochran Park. But if we have what we need, it's, it's a chicken and the egg situation. We need businesses in downtown, and we need a whole mix of businesses in downtown, more than what we have now, even though what we have now is very good, and I encourage everybody to come experience it. But, you know, as you get more, then people will say, "You know what? Somebody's going to say, 'I'll park, I can park in that county, county garage.'" And then some, another entrepreneur's going to come along and say, "You know what? I'm going to start up a shuttle service. I'm going to pick people up there, and I'm going to loop through downtown, drop people off, pick them up, bring them back to their car." And, you know, there's a lot of opportunity. We can't all just sit around and wait for somebody else to do it. That's the problem. We need people willing to, you know, the old saying, "You can't steal second by standing on first." You've got to take a chance. And we've done a lot of things as far as taking chances as a city, and, and I'm encouraging, and I'm not saying we're not willing to take some more chances, but we also need some of the, you know, private enterprise to see the value and hopefully take, take some of those opportunities and those chances as well. Because we'll be there to, we'll be there to support them if they're willing to take those chances.
And let's, let's remind everybody that after 5 o'clock, parking in the Garden Street Garage is open to the public, and it's free, and it's a block, maybe two blocks from most of the businesses that are currently open, that stay open after 5 o'clock. That the city parking structure on Pier, on Pierce is open after 5 o'clock and is free. And of course, the city hall lot is always available, and after 5 o'clock, it's free. So there's lots of parking in the downtown area, two or three blocks, you know, for, for people to park for no charge. So...
Set off, sir. Finish.
Okay. All right. Unless we have anything further on something else to discuss, we'll wait for that further report next month. And our meeting is at 6 o'clock on May the 16th, Thursday. Thank you for your attention.